All right, so folks, I'm gonna call us and say we're gonna start the meeting. Robin will probably be popping in momentarily, we're missing one more member. So we only have one agenda item, but we usually do acknowledge any visitors. We have a bunch of you tonight. Does anybody have anything they wanted to say at the very beginning of the meeting?
Jill, could I actually say something?
Kim has something.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for coming. I want to thank you, but I also wanted to make a quick comment before we started. Education is an important issue for our town as well as for our neighbors. Our primary job as school board directors has always been to give our children the best hospital education at the best cost to our taxpayers. There have been emails sent out this week, most of them asking that the Brattleboro Town School Board join the Alternative Governance Structure Committee. The school board voted at our July 26 meeting to join the AGS committee process, and this was before the vote was taken for the merger. We wanted to be prepared and were willing to do the extra work in this regard. Thus David and I happily joined. As we were doing within the official -- sorry. We wanted to be prepared and were willing to do the extra work in this regard, as we had been doing within the Official Study Committee. We have kept to the forefront the needs of our students, the tax burden of our townspeople, and compliance with the law. However, I was disheartened by the hostile tone of a couple of emails this week. I'm also concerned that there are some that feel, just because someone may have a different idea or view than their own, that that person is being undemocratic and has now, to an extent, been vilified. This type of political bullying is not acceptable at any level. This process has been long and arduous for all concerned. We need to try to remember that we are still neighbors and that once this process is over, we will still be living in the same small town, and that together, we will need to build this community so that we continue to have a safe place for our children to grow and thrive.
Okay, so we were just asking Robin if anybody in the public had anything they wanted to say at the beginning, and a heads up that Lyle is with us, there's a finance committee meeting, so she's gonna pop out of here about 15 after. So if you had any questions, I guess for Lyle specifically, that would be a good time. Otherwise, the only topic on our agenda tonight is to look at what the Alternative Governance Committee has up to this point, and to discuss any thoughts we have, and attempt to keep looking at all options before we go forward with what we have to do by the end of the month, of December. Any comments from anybody out there?
I'm just here as I look to you.
So can you stand up and say your name and your town?
My name is Judy Davis, and I'm just here to urge the board to continue the process that they started last July, at your July meeting, because I saw that as being a very foresighted process that you started. You had a sense that the merger might be defeated, and you didn't want to be left with no other alternative. And therefore, I really appreciated that you took that step back in August and--
July.
July. And so I'm very appreciative of the fact that you had that foresight and that wisdom to start the process, and I'm just here because I want to make sure that that process continues and that you'll vote, if you need to make a formal vote, that you'll vote to continue that process in an official capacity, so that committee can go on to make a formal application to the state.
Any other comments? Yes, please stand up and say your name, Andy.
I'm Andy Davis. I didn't really have any prepared comments, but I would just say, Kim, I'm disappointed that you got messages like that. I was not completely unaware of that kind of thing going on. I do think that there was a pretty resounding statement made on election day that stunned me as someone who's been critical of the merger, but always trying to be civil as a critic of the merger. But that result stunned me, and I think it needs to be listened to. So my plea would be that we move forward in a civil tone, but also listening to what happened on November 7th really clearly. The public here is looking for a slightly different path, and I would just encourage you also to continue with supporting that alternative governance structure process, which is part of the law. It's not some strange left turn that was thrown into the process at the last minute. It's been part of the law from the beginning. That's the best I can do off the cuff. It is an issue I've thought about deeply for quite a long time, and I thank you all for your continued efforts.
Ken, Chris, sorry.
Hi, my name's Chris Chapman, live here in Brattleboro. Went to this school when I was a kid. It's changed. I just wanted to say that I second what Judy Davis and Andy Davis have just said. I think that they said it better than I can, and I would just like to add my voice to theirs.
Yes, ma'am, I don't know your name yet.
Jane Southworth, Brattleboro. I have to admit that due to hearing difficulties related to gray hair, I am unable to take in what you all are saying in some kind of easy, easily parsed and detailed manner. But I would like you to know that I'm here in support of the vote against the merger and of the alternative governance structure, and I support, I've been following by reading since I seem not to be able to hear physical arguments very well. I've been following by reading, and I completely agree with Andy, what Andy and Chris and Judy have said, so I just want you to know that, and thank you for your work, and I hope the debate -- I'm sorry if I gathered from what was said that there have been some uncivil problems, and I hope that we can go forward understandingly and civilly. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
George Carville. I agree with what Andy and everybody has said. I too support the AGS structure. I'd like to point out actually that there were two votes, not just one. Back at town meeting, there was a vote in which a town meeting members clearly said they did not want a merger that did not get approved by the Brattleboro voters. Then we had the vote in which it was not approved. Actually, twice this town has said that they don't want a merger unless they agree with
Any other comments?
Having come in when I did, I can't--
Please say your name and start off.
I am Siegel. Having come in when I did, I can't speak to exactly what the conversation is, but I do know that I came here to support the progression of putting together an alternative plan for the town to use, as was indicated by the vote. So, that's it.
Yes, I'm going to vote. I'd like to say something. So, I need to remind you, as a school board, you do have specific dates that you have to meet. There is a specific date of December 26th that Brattleboro Town School Board must submit a plan. That plan could be that you'd like to go with the alternative, but there has to be a plan that you can endorse. You could, according to what I've heard from both Chris Leopold, our Act 46 attorney, and Donna Russo Savage, you could ask for an extension, but it would be within a few days. An alternative citizens group does not have to meet the same dates. They are not under the same obligations as a Brattleboro town body, the school board body. So, I think that you should listen to the alternative governance. I think you should take it for what it is and how you can work with that, but you do need to remember that December 26th, you're responsible. You're under a different set of obligations than a citizens group.
And Lyle, what happens if we don't make that?
Then you will automatically come under whatever the state decides the plan will be. The Board of Education is charged by the legislature to put together a statewide plan for any group of towns, systems that do not merge in some way. So you will come under their, whatever they decide to do.
I mean, I think that's the case whether we submit a plan or not.
At this point, yes.
But we have a voice, is what Lyle's saying.
Right, right. At least this way we get to say what we wanted. If we don't say anything, then we're not giving our opinion.
Is that clear? Spoon, you look confused.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking, you know, given my experience at the speed with which the state moves, if the plan came in December 29th, if January 1st, or 2nd, or 3rd, there isn't gonna be -- it's not like the state will have begun some irreversible consequential process.
I would agree. That's within reason.
Yeah.
February 1st, maybe not.
Yeah, okay, so.
But also, there's a law. I mean, the date in the law is December 26th, so if we really have an opinion that's strong and that's what we want to say, I think the school board needs to comply with the law.
Yep.
So, but what you're saying, Lyle, because I got a lot of these emails as well, that were asking that we request an extension from the state, but what you're saying is that we can request an extension, but if they grant it, it will be an extension of a few days?
That's what Donna Russo Savage said, as a school--
A few days that are like the days in between Christmas and New Years?
Right.
So I feel like, is there a point to asking for that?
Donna Russo Savage, who is the Act 46 Agency of Education attorney, said that the Board of Education and the agency of ed are really not allowed to make extensions that would have to come through the legislature, because it was legislated that, these days were legislated. So it's not up to the agency to say, you have until February 12th, whatever. It would have to come through legislation.
And then the other understanding that I have, though, that if a citizens group, not a school board, wishes to put something forward, they don't have a deadline.
They do not. They can do it at any point, and I was also assured that the Secretaries of Education would look at those plans as well, and consider any of those points that a citizens group puts in. So, you know, the citizens group has more time, basically.
Is the Act 46, I'm sorry, the Alternative Governance Structures Committee a citizens group, or is that a --
I would consider that.
Okay. So that's not, because I was under the impression that it was like subcommittees of the school boards.
That is true. You have members that are attending as official members, but it does not make it an official Act 46 committee.
Okay.
And they're not school board members from all of the towns--
Right.
--that are currently in the SU either?
It's only Brattleboro and Dumars.
There are citizens from all towns.
But are they an official, or are they official?
Maybe.
Yeah, at the last meeting, they became official of it.
But officially, not all of the school boards are involved.
Spoon.
Is this implying that we should be prepared to have a meeting to approve something at any time, like an emergency meeting?
Well, you missed, though, our plan. We've gone over that in the last couple meetings. So, we talked about this after the vote, November 7th, is that the Tuesday when the vote was? And our next meeting was like the 15th, the next Wednesday, and we talked about the deadlines and what we were looking at, and we looked at our calendar, and that's why we scheduled this meeting specifically for tonight.
This is the emergency meeting that you're speaking of?
And we have to meet the deadline of December 26th as a school board.
Yeah.
So, our meetings in December are already scheduled, and the last one is the 20th. And realistically, having another meeting after the 20th is pretty hard, because it's a Wednesday, I guess it's Thursday, Friday, and then your new Saturday, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and the 26th. So, looking back from there, we said, well, we usually don't vote on something of this magnitude on the 20th directly, and particularly because we'd want to see and make sure stuff is legal and that we all have a chance to understand it. So we said, can we have something by December 6th, meeting from the Alternative Governance Structure? And those folks have sent two drafts to us all already, and we've had discussion on them, and we've sent that back through Kim and David to the committee, and they've heard back from us already.
You should have gotten another draft yesterday.
That's the second draft I was referring to.
Oh.
Was there more than that? I think there's only two, right?
No, but I haven't heard any response to that.
Well, I didn't look for your response. I figured tonight we could talk about that one. But the other meeting, we had another draft to look at, and we responded to that first one already.
Just a couple of clarifications. The purpose of going over this is so that we could have a vote. If we're gonna formally propose to the State Board that we want this, then we have to vote for it. And so being able to look at this and explore and understand it was the purpose of this meeting, and I think it'll probably be part of the next one, and it may even go to the 20th.
It's on our agenda for every single meeting up through then, although our agendas also have like two hours of training on the 20th, and it's the whole academy overview on the 6th.
There's also conflicting comments about what could or couldn't happen with a proposal to, a request to extend the deadline. We've heard dates all the way up to January 31st from various people, including legislators. But it almost doesn't matter, because we're gonna submit something on the 26th, and if we had till the 31st of January, it would be much more complete, but something would be submitted. The important thing is that the process for reviewing and leading up to, I guess, May, when they close off the process of reviewing, and the secretary starts to work on the statewide plan, is, and this is from the MUD School Board Association webinar, slide in the webinar about the process, and districts that submit a proposal, this is an alternative governance proposal under Section 9, will have the opportunity to add to or otherwise amend their proposal in connection with the secretary's consideration of the proposal and conversations with districts, and in connection with testimony presented to the State Board. So there's a several months process of back and forth and amending, and proposing, and additions and considerations. So it almost doesn't matter. The question is, we're gonna present something, it's not gonna be complete, but something's gonna be, well, it'll be something brought to the board to be presented by the 26th. The degree of completeness just depends on how much will be done between now and then. So we're at this point now, and there's still lots of gaps.
So I would say, we said an hour, and then you're gonna start another subcommittee meeting, so maybe go dig right into it?
Yeah.
Explain, and perhaps, as long as we have so many people here from the public, they can also give input, whether they like the different things that are going on in this one.
There are a few copies here, and some copies of the process as well. Want to have a look?
I'll take a paper copy, there's extras in there. Did you want to have that discussed, David?
Well, the proposal to extend.
I think that was just an extension letter.
The document you sent out.
When we get close to the end, let's make a motion that we agree to send a letter to ask for an extension.
Well, all right.
We can do that right now.
Whatever you want. You're the one who's been on this committee, so you can say. I'll let you lead from here.
Well, I think the purpose of this meeting was to get these drafts out and then answer questions, and see what questions and concerns and things people think we need to really focus on, so that we've got that feedback. The only thing I would say, I didn't plan the presentation, so I think the only thing I would point out is that the process we're engaged in is intended to find ways to work more efficiently and collaboratively to provide better results for equity, quality, and transparency, which are the goals. And the idea is, by expanding the contact with communities, with teachers, with administrators, with citizens, and meeting regularly among elementary boards to identify concerns and issues and needs and quality questions, are more likely to come up with better results than simply making change in governance. So the idea is, rather than concentrate in a one, a single board, the idea is more to diffuse and engage the public more extensively. So basically, more of a bottom-up input process rather than a top-down. So that's all I would say by way of introduction. Questions?
I mean, it seems like the focus of this Alternative Governance Structure Committee is to just show that they're gonna be able to meet the equity goals of Act 46 by cooperating, essentially, right?
Well, the other goals as well. And there are efficiency goals and transparency goals as well, and quality.
I'm just a little bit, my main concern with, from the meeting I attended and the brief discussion we had about this at the last meeting, is the, and I guess, I mean, this would be a struggle with the merger or with this structure as well, but the goal of equity and the finding ways to offer the things that are at some schools and not at others, so that everyone has the same opportunities, just doesn't really take into account the really big inequities between the communities and the schools. And so, something like the 0.5% funding idea is gonna be a lot more burdensome on a school district that has 75% of the kids in poverty versus one that has 30%. And so, when I brought that up at the meeting, it was mentioned, like, yes, we are still figuring this out about how we can make it equitable, not just, you know, a flat rate for everyone doesn't mean equity. You know what I'm saying? As far as financial contribution, and then how can we create equity of program, I mean, I don't know, I just, the goal of equity is confusing to me when the schools are so unequal. Are we calling it equal because everybody has an after-school program when, like, some of the kids are, like, barely surviving? I mean, we can't affect people's home situations. I just, there's so much inequity, this seems like a really difficult goal to meet through cooperation.
It is hugely, but if you're talking about equity and program, if everybody has the same program, that's not necessarily gonna provide equity of outcome. And the equity is what happens with kids, and that's a part, I think, is a real weakness in the articles for merger, in that they didn't really articulate how kids were affected by these things. There were a couple of SBACS, or no, NECAP score and SBACS score averages that were presented that didn't really talk about that. And I think this proposal, if you look at the, I think it's on page nine, Act 46, and this is the Regional Education Assistance Fund, and the 1% or the half a percent or the idea of assessment is, and people already responded, my understanding, I wasn't at that meeting either, but my, it's a month you were at, but my understanding is that people change that, and what's in this draft, well, first it talks about that Act 46 requires all districts be responsible for the education of all students in the alternative governance structure. And to assist the committee that we're proposing to establish, the Equity and Opportunity Committee, all elementary schools contribute to a regional educational assistance fund. The assistance funding amount will be determined once a thorough assessment of needs and options is available. The other structure, which is the structure that came from the merger articles, was the Leadership Council, and that would be implemented in all of the elementary schools with a school board member on those councils, and then those board members would meet in what we're calling the Opportunity and Equity Committee, to discuss what's been identified, what the issues are, where the actual equities are, looking at things like graduation rates, kids matriculating to college, all kinds of different test results, other than just the SBACS scores, which are of questionable value, or they're part of a lot of assessments, I guess is the best thing I can say about them. But basically, looking at what really do we need? Do we need, you know, it would all come out fine if we hired a language teacher for the other schools. Or do we need a lot more focus in this area? Does this school need more behavior support? Does that, you know, what actually do people need? And then what needs to be done outside of those? What, you know, what needs to be done to meet those particular goals of Act 46? These structures are designed to meet the goals of Act 46. And one of the things I'll say right off the bat, if nobody's noticed it, or you haven't had time enough to look, is that there are a few specific things mentioned in here as examples of what that committee would decide, but it has, that has to be really clearly articulated, so it doesn't become a catch-all for everything that everybody wants from the schools. It really has to be a focus and constraint, just like we'd ask for a description of the executive committee for the SU. And we need a job description before we know if we want to do that, so that would be in the next draft.
Okay.
Go ahead, Spoon, just jump in.
Robin, just to try and clarify what I think you're saying, is that the economic inequities within the towns would continue to create programmatic inequities in the distribution, inequities in the distribution of programs?
Well, I'm not saying actually that the inequities create the programming inequities, but more what the kids in the different towns need is different. So, what, like, I balked when Kim first brought up, and then this was clarified in the meeting, that they would find a way to kind of make this more equal, but the idea that each school would donate half a percent of their annual budget to this committee dedicated to correcting inequities within the whole SU, that that is gonna be really impactful, and the reason why, you know, it sort of eliminates the effect, not eliminates, but it chips away at the effect of the idea of the equalized pupil budget, that like, a school with a lot of kids in poverty gets extra money to solve that. And then if we are giving a flat rate away at the same rate as a school that doesn't have kids in poverty, that's creating inequity just in the budgetary contribution part of it.
I follow you, so let me ask another. Perhaps not knowing enough yet about how quality is determined, but what I seem to be hearing is that we rely a lot on these tests, like SBAC, whatever, something like that?
That's it.
And whatever else, and that's how we determine the overall efficacy of all the programs in a school.
I don't think that's true.
That's not true?
No, and that's what David was saying, too. That's one measurement that we've used over time, but we, to try to be comparing different schools, even within, you know, Green Street and Academy and Oak Grove here, but we also look at what, there's a margin between the kids that are identified as free and reduced and the kids that are not, and where we're at on those margins, how well those kids do in one socioeconomic group and another.
The goal being for them to be the same.
And, or to eliminate that gap.
Yes.
And that, I think that's more of what Robin is getting at, that we've been watching that gap, and we have a larger amount of those kids.
What you're, what you're doing sounds like you're taking a page out of Major League Sports in which the wealthy teams in the large market areas, New York and LA, actually pay more into a fund which is distributed to the small market teams, which can't afford to, otherwise afford to buy better players, et cetera. And what you're saying is to take a little bit of money from the wealthy towns and spread that around so that everybody's, so that...
No, no, that's not what I'm saying at all. It's the opposite, because here, the big town is the poor town.
Right.
And our financial contribution would be the biggest. The poor town would be giving the most money. It's the opposite of what you're saying. That's what is, is proposed. No, it's not what's happening now, it's, it's what was initially proposed and then clarified to say that they were going to find a way to make that not unfair. But what I am concerned about is voting something for it where that is unclear, what exactly is the thing that they're going to do around that to, to make it not unfair.
There, there are two things, Spoon. One is the, there's poor in terms of average income in the community, and then there's poor in terms of, of school programs. And Brattleboro is the, is, the schools in Brattleboro are the ones that are considered the, the cadets.
Right, yes, yes.
We have, we have the most things available to our students.
Yes, and we also have the kids with the highest amount of need.
And that's why we have the money to do that, because we get more federal money.
Right, trying to make it equal by taking programs that we've brought in to support these really, really high need population of kids, and then take some of our money so that we can share that around. It just feels a little bit unequitable.
Yeah, and I think the, one of the things, I mean, obviously, that's an important discussion, and how that happens, because the Act says, the law says, we have to be responsible for all the kids. So if there are inequities, we have to find ways to pay for them. And the inequities we're being shown are not in Brattleboro. So that's, that's where this comes from. One of the other things that came out of that, another part of the conversation that's also here on, on page that's referred to a little earlier, sort of indirectly, but that the, to, to break down, to look at all the schools, and again, if you've got this, this council in the building that's looking at getting, getting as much data and as clear a picture of what's going on there as, as possible, you look at all the expenditures, you know, like, first, there are 125 students in this school, and we spend this much on a nurse, this much on administration, this much on recreational programs, this much on tutoring, and look at what, compare all these schools and see what, see where the expenditure inequities are, and then more importantly, see where the outcome inequities are. Look at things far beyond the S-BAC to see how are these kids performing? How can we look at the results of the different programming? I mean, Putney's got an outdoor program, Dumerson's got a, or Dumerson's got a newspaper, I think Guilford's got something like that. How does that compare to having after-school tutoring in terms of students' results? And that's really important. Dumerson has a, I think their probability level is, it's well under 40, but it's over 30, but it's not inconsequential, it's above the state average. And their, their, the gap between the lower-income students and the other students is, is tiny, it almost disappears in some of those tests. But that's just one measure that we take once in a while with very small numbers of kids. We need a better way to understand what's going on so we know where to put the money, where to put the support, where the help needs to happen. And that's, that's the purpose of this.
But I also think that the job of a teacher to be able to bring every student into their full potential is way easier when you have a classroom with 40% of the kids living in poverty versus a classroom where 75% are living in poverty.
No classroom.
So it's not necessarily going to be a linear path from like, well, Dumerson did this, so if we do this, it will get the same outcome. I mean, our situation's different.
And that's part of the problem with looking at the inputs, the pro, comparing the programs as opposed to preparing, comparing the outcomes. If you just look at the programs, it just tells you what's being applied, it doesn't tell you what the effect is. And that's what we need to uncover is what's the effect? Then, then look for a solution. And one of, it's funny, is how we've come full circle to the very first time the Secretary of Education came here, she said that the districts that focus on the money are the ones that tend to go off track. And I think focusing on the money as opposed to, how do we get the information we need to, to make sure that there's equity? How do we get the information we need? How do we get information out to the public? How do we get, how do we examine, how do we measure the quality of what's going on? We just had the field review from the Agency of Education, in a couple of weeks, they're going to come and present the results, and we're going to have a sense of how do we do, one of the goals talks about, the education quality standards, we're going to have a sense based on that report to how we're doing. And that's going to, that's going to influence what we decide to do. If it's going to be an SU, SU-wide report, I'm sure they'll be specific and probably become enlightening to hear if there's specific information about each school in that EQS report, the agency report.
Each recommendation and commendation is at the SU level.
Yes, yeah. So that's actually not much with this. So we'll have, still have to figure out how are we going to measure how well we're meeting those standards. Do we have tests that, or assessments in any way show how we're meeting the specific standards, the quality standards?
The ed quality standards, the...
Yeah, in, in each building.
No. Well, I mean, it goes back to meeting the, there, there are academic standards referenced in the ed quality standards that are measured by S-BAC.
So that's how we would look at those. And we haven't looked at those, not that I'm aware, in fact, if you've seen those in S-BAC are the Ames Web, the web charts that we got a couple years ago.
I am happy to provide you with whatever data you would like to look at. If I have it, I'll show it to you.
As soon as we know what to ask.
I think this is quiet as we've ever been.
Looks like it ran out of stuff.
Does anybody from the public have, I know you all have...
I would just like to say that I appreciate Robin's comments, because that's one reason that I opposed the merger, was because I felt like Brattleboro's, the programs that Brattleboro have and the needs that Brattleboro have are really paramount. One, because I live in this town, but also because I know the needs. And that was my concern with the merger, is that we right now have a lower school tax rate, but since all those tax rates have to be equal, then in the long run, Brattleboro's taxes would not only rise, but then there'd be the risk with an Australian ballot, as the school taxes will continue to go up, particularly as the state taxes go up, that the school budgets will begin to be voted down, because it will be an Australian ballot. And then Brattleboro's programs will be cut because they are more, they'll be more expensive, or they'll cut out the programs they extend to others. But I really was concerned that under the merger, Brattleboro's schools would suffer, and a lot of the programs we have now would not be continued or would be voted out because of the budget concerns as tax rates continue to go up for the whole WSESU. So I totally agree with you. That was my concern about the merger. So I see this as an alternative for us to keep our individual school boards and our individual tax rates, but find another way with some kind of fund or some kind of sharing through the WSESU of providing programs that the schools themselves decide they want in order to increase the performance or the success of their students. So, so I agree with you totally, that's my concern too, is what will happen to Brattleboro? But I see it worse in a merger.
I don't understand when I read through it, how the per-pupil cost decrease. How can a small town like Dumerson that's already over the threshold afford anything else? Or even get down below the threshold?
Yeah, I don't, I, there's not a, a simple answer to that. I mean, other than having a group in the school looking for ways to reduce costs, because that's, obviously, you know, there has to either an increase in revenue somehow, which is not likely, or a decrease in costs to, to keep that per pupil down. So they have, they're going to have to look for ways to, ways to save. They're going to have to look, and hopefully, the, the hope is that with having, you know, having a broader group, looking at having much more participation, and having a comparison with all the other schools in terms of, some of the things I said, we're spending this much on administration, we're spending this much on food service, we're spending this much on transportation, we're spending this much on various programming, how is, and here are the results we're getting with those expenditures, what's the, is there, is, are there efficiencies there? Having a benchmark to find the best practices for efficiency, I don't believe we, we've, we've never done that, we've never talked about those things, we've never examined things that way. And hopefully, there will be areas where we'll learn and where schools will be able to reduce those costs. But that's always, and obviously, the obvious things that get talked about, like, don't hire people who retire, if you can get away without doing it, that's, you know, the other possibility, but the per-pupil cost is, it's, it's where it is because of what the town's budget is. And that's based on what they see as the cost that they need, and that's what needs to change.
So how does this proposal change it?
It provides, hopefully provides a couple, some structures where the schools can look internally and then talk with each other and find, find where are the, where are there more efficient ways to do things? Are there ways we can collaborate, do things together? Are there resources we can share? Are there ways we can use technology to share a particular resource that one school has or another? It's basically an opportunity to take a, a creative approach to reducing costs and finding efficiencies. But there's not, I mean, there's not a simple answer, here's what we're going to do, we're going to reduce this, 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 and that's going to target the per-pupil cost. Now, the per-pupil cost is driven by a lot, everything, the salaries, the, the benefits, and then all the, the programs.
Can we actually talk a little bit about the merger articles on that? Because I felt a little bit unclear on those, how was the cost savings being accomplished? And just like, what's the, the difference here between not having it merged and having different boards or versus the merger, or where did the actual dollar savings come in there? Thanks.
So, the idea there, and in both of these plans, neither one of them is specific enough because it's a governance thing, and then the next board's have to make a bunch of these decisions.
The details.
But the, I, well, the basic reality is when you put more students in, you've increased, you've decreased your cost per student because you have more students in the system. So if you're sharing, if you put in one teacher and that teacher's covering, how many are there, 3,000 or so in the whole system, or if, more realistically, covering between, your cost for a foreign language teacher, for example, that we talked about a lot, would be spread out over all the kids. And so the tax rate doesn't have to jump as high, for example, like in Guilford, because you're covering one teacher with just 110 kids.
But are you saying, so you're talking about specials teachers being shared across the SU is where the savings would be?
That, and then changing around the kids themselves, the teachers themselves. And so you look at classes that are saying, this one over in Dumerson has, there's six kids in first grade in Dumerson, and Putney, maybe they could have shared those somehow and swapped the kids around.
You mean like, go to first grade in Putney and then go to Dumerson for second, and then back to third in Putney?
Or maybe just move kids around in a different way from the very beginning and leave them there.
But it's not really making more kids. There's still the same number of kids in the SU.
Don't make more kids, but you would eliminate a teacher. If you eliminated a whole classroom and put two classrooms in neighboring towns together, you would eliminate an entire teacher.
Okay, so that's what they were proposing in, or something like that?
But you can never propose specifically which teacher, because the merger can only talk about the overall structure, and then the boards would have to make that decision. But you don't have that ability otherwise.
And this proposal doesn't really either, because each board is still individual. So there's no guarantee for the cost savings, because each board is still only responsible for their own school.
Well, there's less guarantee, because they're only responsible for their own school, and they have to, the idea from, what I get from this is that we will all want to share more because we've been told to share more.
Well, well, we, we have to find a way to do it, because that's what the law says either way. But I think it's more because there'll be a, a process of, of talking and, and sharing that information. But the, if there's, if somebody has a, you know, a first grade or second grade, like you described, it's unlikely those kids are going to go bust to a, a surrounding town. But if, if teachers can, can move around though, and it is possible that if there was, if like, if there's a fifth grade in one town had six kids and another had 13, it wouldn't be...
There's another element of the discussion that I think is, is apparent in Brattleboro town, because the population is big enough. In the four outlined towns, student populations are now at a level where they have been declining over time, and they are getting quite variable. And a few kids here or there in Brattleboro town doesn't have nearly the impact on per-pupil count that a few kids here or there in Dumerson, Guilford, Putney, or Vermont.
Okay.
So what you've got is a situation where...
It's a much bigger percentage of their budget.
Right, so those, those fluctuations really start to have an impact on the per-pupil and, and what I'm afraid of is that we get to a point where town budgets in the outlined towns, we have a year where we happen to have a low per, per pupil, student, equalized pupil count, and for some reason, a higher budget load, maybe a building project or something. And that budget's going to go down, and once budgets start going down, it's, it's, it becomes a really vicious cycle. And so if everybody were in the pool, then a low count in Guilford might be, might be balanced by a slightly higher count in another town.
Okay.
And you're calculating based on the whole system. And so needs that happen, say you do need a new boiler in Guilford, God forbid, they've already, but say you do, you can, you can accommodate that cost without it having this horrible impact on the budget.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And I don't, I don't think that piece of the discussion has really ever come out clearly. There is a, I mean, there's a reason people join co-ops, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, these are the type of issues that I think are just really, has a different resonance for people with a really small school, which even in Brattleboro, our smallest school, it doesn't have like, six kids per class, you know, it's not that small. So yeah, I hadn't considered that, how big a, small difference in student numbers could make.
And there's quite conscious load balancing amongst the three grandtown schools, right? You know?
Right, with entering kindergarteners, they purposely try to make it equal in the six classrooms.
Spoon, jump in.
I'm listening to all of this, and I, I do understand these problems of developing equity, and I'm thinking of the larger picture. I'm thinking of a law that is forcing the towns, or trying to force the towns, to share their resources. While, on the state level, the legislature is not forcing the wealthy people to share their resources. And my feeling is, we here on the town level, on the bottom level, are going to spend the rest of our lives fighting over pennies, constantly losing the battle in one place or another.
Spoon, I gotta give you a point for consistency on the message, but that, really, Act 60 attempted to do that. That, that is the way, and that's the part that frustrates me most as a school board member, is that we take all of our money and we send it to the state to be redistributed. And the way all of us form our budgets throughout the entire state is we all look at what we want to do individually, and then we send it up, and then we find out how much we're all paying in taxes. So there's a complete disconnect between how much we actually ask for and how much we actually pay for. We pay for less than half of what we're using ourselves. It comes from other towns.
Well...
And redistributing, from redistributing all the way around the state. So we're already, I mean, we're already disconnected from that, which, combined with the fact that we, we all in Vermont value the small feeling of a small school, a small town, and that's why we live here, and everywhere around the state, we want to keep small schools. And we're not, in this SU, we're not the smallest. There's some other ones around the state. I think Frank talks about, Winhall has more school board members than students. So it's, it's remarkable. But the system that, that we do have, it does attempt to redistribute and be more equitable in the money.
I would take, I see what you're saying, but that redistribute, redistribution that you're talking about is the redistribution of wealth of all the people on the bottom. And it doesn't touch the people on the top. And we're about to see that even explode into more magnificent absurdity. And, and, but, I mean, something's going to have to give you.
So we have to concentrate on what we can do, which is this alternative governance or merger or something.
Yeah, I know, I know the subject.
I mean, I feel like the frustration here is, people who voted so resoundingly against this are people who just do not want Act 46 to be the law. And I completely understand that, I feel like we're doing good. We're doing fine. We would be fine if we just stayed as we are, but unfortunately, by law, we can't just keep it how it is.
Although I think both sides, both the alternative governance, from your documentation and from the study committee, realizes that we're not just fine as we are. and from the study committee realizes that we're not just fine as we are, that there's definite inequities of what we're able to give our kids just within our supervisory union. And, you know, we talk about the inequity of a foreign language teacher, and you can put that down on nice to have, but Guilford needs some other stuff that they actually cannot do, that they need, need for their population that also has a higher level of poverty.
Right, I, when I said we, I meant just the Brattleboro Town Schools, but yes, that's the problem. I, I think that with the, the, I mean, that's why the act was passed. The town that has the most people is, I feel like we're doing okay at trying to meet the needs of the kids with the amount of money that we currently have, but the, the people who don't have enough kids are suffering, and that's why they made this law. But to the people of, of our town, I think that it feels like, you know, why are we gonna mess with a thing that we're already doing our best, that we could? And the problem that Act 46 is trying to solve is the falling birth rate of Vermont. That's not gonna be solved by this, okay? The problem is people don't stay here after they grow up, they go somewhere else and have their families there. And the less and less kids that we have, this is a Band-Aid. We can merge, and then in 20 years from now, if the birth rates keep falling and people don't stick around, they're gonna have to like, let's just make the whole state one SU. I don't know what they're gonna do then, but, you know, I really feel like the focus of our, of our government would be better served on how can we make people wanna stay and have their children here? And the worst way to do that is by level funding the school budgets. So at the same time that we're being told, like, do this for the good of the kids of your SU, but also, don't spend any more money. Yeah, I mean, it's like a ridiculous position that we have been put in.
So we have six minutes, folks, and then the next meeting is supposed to start, and we can, I'm sure, discuss different political leanings all night long. But the point of this meeting is, what else do we have to say for David and Kim to take back to the alternative governance structure about this latest round of the proposal?
I mean, this is obvious, but I just feel like the more concrete this can be made by the time that we have to vote on it, the more fair it is to ask us to vote for something when, what we're, the two choices are something that's very, very complete, but that the people of all of the towns are resoundingly opposed to, at least the ones who came out and voted are. Or something that isn't quite put in stone yet. So it feels a bit uncertain, you know, of exactly what it's gonna be. So I, I feel like that's my biggest ask would be like, please, complete it as much as possible. And I know that seems like unlikely, as we're like still at the 20,000 mile view on it, but to feel comfortable saying like, yeah, let's do that, I'd like to know what is the that a little bit more.
I guess that's what I said back in, in November, at our first meeting in the month of November, when I said that I will not vote for something if I don't know what it looks like.
Yeah, and I know for me, it's always been the financial, how is this going to be paid for?
And for me, it comes back to those two goals as a school board member. There's only two reasons that I sit here on this board. One is to get a good quality education, and the second is at a taxpayer rate that they can afford. Period. Everything has to be sent, seen through those lengths. I understand the merger after two years of playing around with it and looking at it and thinking about it on how the per pupil cost comes down. I don't understand that in the alternative. And in order to give it serious consideration, I have to understand that. And what I get out of what I've read, David, is that people wanna keep their own local school boards, and they wanna control their own local spending, and have direct input on things, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, good, understand it, but where's the per pupil cost? Where does that go?
In the areas where it's high. Well, it's, because it's highest at the high school, so we should be asking that question.
Well, I think the high school, and a merge system, the high school comes together too, yes.
But we're not talking about the high school.
Right.
In this, in this third.
Yeah, but it's, it's the towns that are right up against the spending limit. They can't really afford to go over, that's where the per pupil cost is.
They pass it, and most, Dumerson passes it consistently, the spending limit.
Well, I would check with them. I know they get right up against it.
That's what Christina said anyway.
Well, anyway. Well, toward all of those ends, I would like to move that the board support a motion to apply for an extension of the deadline for submitting the Section 9 alternative governance structure proposal.
So there's about four questions in that. The board, you need to write it out maybe for us.
Well, you, I sent you the letter, and then I didn't bring it as a copy.
So.
If you looked at yesterday's email, the-
You were, it says in there to support for the alternative governance.
Extend the deadline.
Extend the deadline for alternative governance, but we don't-
This is the version ever since last.
The alternative governance committee doesn't have a deadline. I mean, you have supposedly the same sort of deadline, but you've been hearing that you can do a different deadline.
Well, no, what we have been told, and again, from a number of sources, is that we can apply, because of the lateness of the vote, we can apply, and the state board can give us an extension.
Who's we?
The people, we as a board, if we vote to do this, if we vote to ask for an extension, we would be applying for an extension to put together this proposal, so that we would then, then decide whether to submit it or not. We're actually for an extension, we're not asking to accept our submission, we're asking to wait to submit it.
And is there a date with that letter?
No, they would have to decide. I think-
This, this is the one that Christina gave me, and they put January 31st for their date. But I know that Lyle said they're not bound by the same requirements by law of dates.
Let me, let me read this, and I wanna, I, I move that the board sign on to this request. On November 9th, the towns in our Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union voted overwhelmingly to reject the proposal to merge our school boards into a single unified union district. We have formed an alternative governance committee and are exploring the reasons the voters voted as they did, what they value most in our schools, and how we can enhance our SU to meet the goals of Act 46. We have made excellent progress, meeting several times involving members from all our towns, and working on a draft that we are submitting to boards for comment. However, we will need additional time to develop our Section 9 AGS application and assure that we have incorporated the concerns of the voters in our district. At this time, we request an extension until January 31st, 2018.
Now, that letter I don't think would be appropriate from our board, because that's saying, that's about the alternative governance structure committee requesting more time to develop their proposal. We're requesting more time to find out what that is and then decide if that's the thing that we wanna vote in or the merger. So ours would have to be a different letter than that one.
Well, this is-
I just was wondering about the date.
Though the, this, I, I think that's wrong, although I'm not sure I can say why. Because as Lyle just said, we as a board have to ask, have to submit by the 26th, and if we're not going to, we need to have, ask for an extension.
It's just that the language in the letter is talking about, we're asking for an extension to, to keep on developing our, I mean, I guess, yeah, though, it's unclear what the, I feel like our letter would be a differently worded thing, asking for more time.
So the first problem is that the law says we have to do it by December 26th as a school board. We don't have any way around that.
Right.
But I think we could still ask, hey, could we have an extension? And then if they say yes before December 20th, then we can have more time. If they don't say yes, then we'll just still go to S U.
But just so we all understand, that according to what we're hearing from lawyers and Donna Russo Savage and from the legislature and the law itself, the law is clear. We have until December 26th as a school board to submit something.
And we're asking for an extension.
I feel like it's still okay to ask.
That's fine, I don't have a problem with asking.
And I feel like the-
But I'm not gonna say that we're asking specifically so that we can develop it, because this letter says that we're definitely going forward with an alternative governance structure. At this point, we don't know that, because none of us feel like we have enough information from what we're just saying.
Yeah, well, this is the letter from the committee asking for an extension.
So it would have to be, as you're saying, we have a different letter.
Well, it says, we need additional time to develop our Section 9 AGS application and assure that we have incorporated the concerns of the voters in our district.
Right, so that's saying we're at-
But we're not asking, we're not, as a board of Brattleboro, not asking for more time to develop our application for AGS, we're asking for more time to look at that thing that's been developed.
From the committee committee.
Look at the, yes, look at the alternative.
So that we can see what you have before we make a decision. But, but if we write that letter, then we're saying that we definitely are doing that. And we don't have enough information right now to say that that's what we all wanna do.
Yeah, I think if we just have something that's more like straightforward, you know, our-
We're requesting more time.
We're requesting more time to consider what to submit to comply with the law, you know, subsequent to the vote of our town.
That's it, I think that's the whole thing, right there.
So who's our, who's our recorder?
Plurk is right here. Spoon, plurking.
Spoon, write down what Robbins has said.
Motion, stalled. Extend deadline for AGS proposal without a date.
No, so, take all that off.
Hold on, I'll just, I'll type, maybe, that'd be easier. How's that? Put it right here. So, go away, speak, speak, whoever's.
Okay, um, the Brattleboro Town School Board would like to request an extension to consider our options for complying with Act 46 subsequent to the vote in our towns against the Articles of Agreement to Merge.
When I say therefore, I say we go, go for broke on a date and say-
I mean, January 31st sounds good to me.
Therefore, we are restricted until January 31st.
Kim is last, we can see what they do.
Yep.
All they can do is say no.
Exactly.
Okay, how's this? The Brattleboro Town School Board would like to ask for an extension for the December 26, 2017 deadline until January 31st to consider all possible options for complying with Act 46. For the Act 46 submission deadline of December 26th to go to... Okay.
Second.
Who actually made that motion? You can't second, not yet.
Discussion?
No, not yet, not yet. Who made the-
Well, I was too mindful, Robin.
So you made the motion, you're seconding?
I'll second.
Now we can have discussion by the board, and we can choose to open if we wish. Any discussion by board? Now discussion by town.
That's missing, was in the original one, the line about why, that because the town vote was so late. So I think that, it's a weaker, weak letter without that.
Right, that David mentioned that, because our vote was-
So Robin, are you going to amend your motion?
Let me see, yes, I will amend my motion. Oh no, I've got, I've got that one on, on paper.
Act 46 submission deadline.
Because they didn't mention the voting date in theirs, but, um, how about if you just end it, make a period after December 26th, and then say, at this time, or due to the lateness of our vote on November 7th, we would like to request an extension until January 31st to consider all possible. Or maybe that needs to be, I'm like queen of the run on sense, if you wanna make that into the change of term.
And we'll point out that the lateness of the vote was in response to all the people who kept saying, slow down, slow down, slow down, and get, and take your time, and so the study committee responded to that.
And we also had other votes in other towns that needed to be taken care of first.
Right, yeah, no, I don't, I don't think this is, I'm not intending to mention that as a criticism of the voting date, just as a reason why we need more time.
Okay, any more discussion by all of us? Are we ready to vote? I don't see anybody jumping up and down from outside.
Oh, there's-
One more, couldn't see it behind the camera. Send your, say your name, please.
Louise Zach, I live in Brattleboro. And as a practical matter, I think it's very important to consider that Act 46 provides for alternative governance structures. There are towns in the state who have successfully applied for that, so it's not so bizarre that what is being proposed. I agree that there isn't much specificity, but a plan is not a contract. I do think the plan can become more specific without necessarily by January 31st getting to the exact nitty gritty of the per student cost. It can still be a plan for how the area, how the surrounding towns are going to achieve the goals of Act 46.
Anything more about this actual motion that we have on the table? Are we ready to vote on this motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? We're 10 minutes over, and there's people waiting for their next meeting.
Adjourn.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We're done.